The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. Public comment. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed-session agenda items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed-session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed-session agenda items.
Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. My name is Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Isidro Menkos. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas noches. La reunión del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Napa Valley va a tener interpretación simultánea al español. Para poder acceder a la interpretación simultánea, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver un icono del globo terráqueo en la barra de abajo de Zoom. Pueden hacer clic allí y escoger el idioma Spanish o español. Si están ustedes en su celular o en una tableta, van a ver tres puntitos en la parte superior derecha o inferior derecha de Zoom. Al hacer clic allí, van a encontrar los servicios de interpretación y pueden elegir el idioma Spanish o español. Gracias. Back to you.
Thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member De Ressa Cifuentes?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Ryser?
Present.
Trustee Shu?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
All are present. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. E1, report on closed session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed-session agenda items?
I do. Item D1, student discipline. With respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Ed. Code 35146 and 489120, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G, Student Matters. A, Expulsions. The Board recommends for the expulsion for student 10242024A.
Move to expel.
Second.
We need a roll call vote for this.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ryser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And item D1A2, the Board recommends for the expulsion for student 10242024B.
Move to expel.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. Roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Ryser?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now could Director Manning lead us in the flag salute?
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, announcement. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. And the process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. And now we are going to... Approval of agenda. I would like to pull item I3A.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, first by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. Student Trustee De Ressa Cifuentes?
A.
Aye.
Okay. Is this a roll call? No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Nope. Okay, so it's unanimous. Five, approval of minutes, October 10th, 2024. I was not here, so I have to abstain.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Wait, excuse me. First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Hart. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, whoops. Abstain, sorry. One abstention. One abstention. And now we have recognition of visitors and employee organizations.
Thank you, President Water. None of the leaders of our employee organizations are in attendance this evening.
Okay, great. And recognition of Students of the Month, again, my favorite part of the agenda. First, we will have American Canyon High School for November, Madeline Davis. We have Principal... Yes, we have Principal Karen Hatton here.
Dr. Musetti, Board of Directors, Student Board Member De Ressa Cifuentes, welcome. My first student is Madeline Davis. She unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. She's actually working. And Madeline was nominated by her teacher, Summer Hart. She is involved in theater. She is in the Speech and Debate Club. She is also actively involved in our training program, so she's actually at the football game tonight on the sidelines with her mother, who is our athletic trainer and CTE teacher at American Canyon High School. She volunteers at Kaiser. She's directed many mainstage shows, and she's due to direct a show this spring. But I would like to read you what she prepared. "Good evening and thank you for this amazing opportunity. I am immensely grateful that I was chosen as Napa Valley Unified School Board Student of the Month. I would like to start off by thanking all of the members of the Board of Directors, Riley Grayden, who's not here tonight, our Student Board Representative and Superintendent, Dr. Musetti. I would also like to thank Mrs. Hart, my drama teacher, for nominating me. Here in the Napa Valley School District, I feel like I have had some truly amazing opportunities to grow and learn more about myself. It was here that I was able to let my creative juices truly flow. It was here that I was able to access the unique classes that are preparing me for my future career. In the future, I hope to become a nurse, preferably in labor and delivery, but time will tell. I feel more prepared because of access to anatomy classes, as well as sports medicine and leadership in health. All these classes that were provided at my school through this district are helping me reach my goals. Not only am I getting set up for success in my future, but I am also learning about the creative side of my personality through drama classes. I am a firm believer that being able to let your imagination and creativity have a place to flourish is key to succeeding in life. I love clothes and fashion and acting, and to be quite honest, I like bossing people around from time to time. Having opportunities like being costume lead, having acting roles onstage, and now being able to assistant-direct our school fall play, which I encourage you all to attend, by the way, it has been a great way to learn about who I am as a person. In terms of extracurricular activities, I have also become the Secretary of our Speech and Debate Team. The speaking skills that I have gained from being part of this club are evident to me even in my day-to-day life. I have been involved in track and field for my entire high school career. I throw shot put and discus, and seeing my fellow teammates and I striving to constantly improve creates an amazing sense of community. And now as an upperclassman, I'm able to support underclassmen in their events. Unfortunately, I'm not attending tonight due to my job in the food industry, but I will say that I am learning all kinds of people skills I know will benefit me in my future career. Ms. Hart, my drama teacher, has been supportive throughout my theater career. I'm grateful for her support and encouragement as I approach the next chapter of my life after I graduate. Having the opportunity to take leadership in health, which I know is a unique class to my school, has been really helpful in learning about life skills I will need after high school. Mrs. Davis has been supportive not only as my mother, but also as my teacher. Every person I talk to about her class says they are so glad they took it, and the skills they learned from it are being used in their everyday lives. American Canyon High School has played a key role in shaping who I am today. The diversity of the school, the unique opportunities, the support of staff, and the abundant extracurriculars all continue to mold the students who attend into the best versions of themselves. I'm striving to leave a positive impact on the people I interact with and the programs I'm involved with, not just for today's American Canyon High School, but for my three siblings coming up behind me. I know that with the experiences that have been given to me, I will go into my future with confidence. Thank you again for this honor." That's Maddie.
Hi. And let's see, you're also going to present the December student?
Yes. I'm pleased to present this to Calix Joel Muntoller, and he was nominated by his counselor, Juana Saum. He's involved in a lot of things. He's been an elected ASB officer since freshman year. He's the current senior class president. He's an athlete. He is in wrestling track and cross country. He's taken Napa Valley college courses. He is a very kind and mannered young man, and I've had... Enjoyed getting to know him in my brief time here, but I'm going to let him tell you a little bit about himself.
First, I would like to thank the NVUSD Board of Directors, Superintendent Dr. Musetti, and Student Board Representative Riley Grayden for this honor of being elected as the December Student of the Month for American Canyon High School. I was born on Camp Pendleton, San Diego, when my father was enlisted in the U.S. Marine Corps. He is now an officer in the U.S. Air Force and will be reaching his retirement in a few years. I can truly say that growing up with the influence of a military father has helped me learn about self-discipline. This has helped me throughout my journey in the NVUSD school system, where I gained many more characteristics which shaped the person I am today. During my Canyon Oaks Elementary School days, I used to be this little kid who was shy and nervous with public speaking due to my speech stutter. But I knew I wanted to do more for my school, so I ran for student council president. I didn't win, but losing taught me about the importance of resilience. My mom then enrolled me in piano lessons, since then, or since she read that music can actually help me with speech stutter. Luckily, my stutter went away, and I became more confident in public speaking. My years on campus at American Canyon Middle School was short-lived due to COVID, but it was a great learning experience on the importance of adaptability. Learning through a computer was challenging, especially when our internet connection was slowed down. But I was able to adapt and overcome this challenge. Patience is really a virtue. Luckily, before COVID, I joined the robotics team at ACMS and competed in the robotics competition at UC Davis, which taught me the importance of teamwork. At American Canyon High School, I was honored with the roles of freshman class vice president, sophomore class vice president, and then eventually becoming junior class president and senior class president. I truly came a long way from that shy Canyon Oaks Elementary School kid. These past four years at ACHS tested my diligence, time management, organizational skills year after year. I was able to balance multiple AP and honors classes, sports, and extracurricular activities while still helping my parents at home. What I enjoyed most about American... about high school is my leadership class and my amazing leadership teacher, Mrs. Harris. I am proud to be in the leadership community, where everyone is friendly and shares the same passion of bringing students together through events such as homecoming, prom, A Season Night Out, and Chunk or Treat. After graduation, I hope to pursue a career in the medical field with the prestigious Air Force Academy, where I can continue being a part of a leadership community. I'm very grateful for the opportunities and challenges that I experienced while in the NVUSD system, and especially during my time at ACHS, because it has helped me improve on characteristics that are important to become successful in my future career goals. I'd also like to add that I am humbled with the valuable friendships I've made throughout the years. Thank you for your time.
And now we have Napa High School, and I believe we have the Assistant Principal presenting.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I'm here representing Dr. Ainsworth, who is unavailable tonight. Our first student for Napa High School, Cheryl Latton, by the way, I'm Assistant Principal at Napa High. And thank you, Board of Trustees, President Water, Dr. Musetti, and our Student Representative De Ressa Cifuentes. It's awesome to be here with you tonight. Our first student is Jose Pina Verdusco. And one of the things that is great about Jose that I think represents Napa High School so well, he came to us as a freshman in our ELD program, but decided from the time he got here, he wanted to go to college. And he had a dream that was something he wanted to do. He made sure he learned English. He got very skilled at it and eventually joined our Avid program as a 10th grader. And he has been just rising through ever since. He's taking honors classes, AP classes, challenging himself. But he's one of the kind of unsung heroes of the school, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we recognized him tonight. He helps everyone, does everything he can to make sure that he is creating a fantastic environment for all of his peers. One thing that really stood out to me is when one of his friends ended up suddenly homeless, he gathered a group of other students together. They went out to the community and found resources to help support the student, to help get him clothes and food and housing and everything. And never asked for anything in return. He just is always there supporting everyone. So Jose, I'm really proud of you. I'm going to go ahead and call him up here.
Good evening, Dr. Musetti and NVUSD Board and Community Members. I'm honored to be recognized as an Napa High Student of the Month for November. I would like to thank the school board for this award and recognition. Also, thanks to my brother, who has been with me since I began my school journey. To continue, I would like to share some about my story and who I am. I came to the United States six years ago. I didn't know any English when I got here, so I was really lost when I started middle school. I was really stressful because I had no friends who could help me in my classes, and my classes were challenging for me because of the language barrier. After I made friends and I was doing well at school, COVID started. Soon was difficult for me, and I learned less English than possible. But when I got into high school, my teacher, Ms. Galloway, helped me improve my speaking and writing skills. She also introduced me to a class that was called Avid. She said that I was a good student, and I should join it. I decided to join Avid when I was a sophomore. It was really hard at the beginning because I didn't have anyone in that class, but eventually I made good friendships with my classmates, and I made good memories with them. It was incredible to go on field trips with them and see how big colleges were. My junior year applied and got accepted by, if given a chance, scholarship. Now, as a senior, I'm taking Expository Reading and Writing, AP Spanish, and NBC Stats. So my six years at NVUSD have been productive. However, one of my biggest goals right now is to get accepted to Cal Poly, where I hope to get a major in landscape architecture. To conclude, I want to thank my family, my friends, who've always been there to support me, Ms. Galloway for always pushing me over my limits, and Dr. Ainsworth for this opportunity. Thank you.
All right. December, we're very excited to have her speak tonight. Unfortunately, she was injured this afternoon, and she got... She came tonight and was going to try and push through, but she got, I think, a slight concussion, so she's getting checked out. But she ended up having to leave tonight. But she... Ms. Calderon came and is going to read for her, which is fantastic, so we appreciate it. But Sam Jimenez is another one of those unsung heroes. She is someone that is the true epitome of Napa High School and everything that we stand for. This young lady is always out there making friends, doing everything she can to be supportive of everybody on the campus. If she sees someone sitting by themselves, she will be out there talking to them, making friends. She's been involved in leadership, Color Guard, Avid, all kinds of different clubs on campus, and is just an incredible young lady, and she's so well-deserving. So Ms. Calderon, who is one of the people who nominated her in addition to about six other teachers, is here tonight to go ahead and give her a sweet talk.
I'm going to try to embody her positivity and wonderful spirit. Here I go. Good evening, Dr. Musetti, NVUSD Board and Community Members. I want to start off by saying what an honor it is to be recognized as the Student of the Month. My name is Samantha, but you can call me Sammy. I want to start off by thanking my mom for always being there for me. I wouldn't be where I am today without her support. The same thing could be said about my dad. I thank him for making sure my sister and I always have what we need. I started being curious about everything at a very young age. I attended NVLA, where I found myself going the extra mile to learn more. Whether it was staying after school, getting support for reading, learning code for robot cars, learning hula, or practicing my flute until I got the song right, I always found joy in learning. After NVLA, I went to Harvest, where I continued with the ESA program and played in the band. I had amazing teachers who brought out the best in me. My math teacher encouraged me to take Math 1 in middle school, even though I didn't think I had it in me. Little did I know it was the start of something bigger. I'm currently a senior at Napa High School. The last four years, I really did my best to take advantage of everything the school had to offer. I took both early flight and late-flight classes the last three years, all while maintaining a 4.0 GPA. In both my freshman and sophomore years, I took robotics and the principal of engineering at Napa. I was part of the robotics team and even went out to middle schools to teach kids basic fundamentals in engineering. I like to be a well-rounded student. I'm in Avid, Mariposa, Summer Search, ESA, and Color Guard. I'm one of the ESA Club Presidents and CSF Club Vice Presidents. All these things wouldn't have been possible without the NVUSD support. My educational journey reflects support and appreciation for dual immersion enrichment... Sorry, dual immersion, enrichment opportunity, and academic programs, and of course, the arts. Your support to these schools and programs have made my educational journey rewarding. I love reaching out to my community. I volunteered at NVLA events. I've helped out at our local bingo. And last summer, I helped people study to get their citizenship. I was in leadership, and I helped out with the Hoco floats, back-to-school nights, and creating a community at Napa High. This will be my third and last year working side by side with my dear best friend, Aleana, organizing the Day of the Dead event at Napa High. As I mentioned before, I'm a senior, and my plan for next year is to go to a four-year university and study civil engineering. I'm currently a dual-enrollment student, taking calculus in hopes of getting a head start. I'm looking to apply into Santa Clara University, Cal Poly, UC Santa Barbara, et cetera. I'm most proud of the person I've grown to be, and I know I will do great things one day, and this is only the start. Thank you for having me tonight.
I'm feeling extremely inspired. What great stories. Okay, now we are going on to public comments on non-agenda items, and we do have a speaker here. Thank you. And our speaker here is Norma Ortiz.
Hello. Good evening, President Water, Board Members, Student Rep, and the Napa Valley community. My name is Norma Ortiz. Following my April 25th, 2024, and October 10th, 2024, public comment, I would like to add that to show empathy, you don't need a credential to be empathetic. It can become part of an individual's personality embedded in their everyday practice by choice. To avoid putting someone at risk of harm within the school setting, we can make trauma-informed decisions together. According to research, schools play a critical role in supporting students who have experienced trauma. Creating and maintaining a trauma-informed school can promote a sense of safety, support, belonging, and inclusivity, lessen the escalation of mental health issues associated with trauma, bullying, hostile environments, and so forth, and better position students for success, including graduation rates. We need to motivate our children to want to come to school, engage, contribute, and learn. Moreover, promoting social-emotional intelligence with example combined with early intervention, appropriate support services, positive school climates is fundamental. According to the National Center for School Safety Toolkit, the primary audience includes school personnel, board members, teachers, and student support staff, parents and families, and community partners. DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion in school systems, compliance awareness, HR-led practices, and others must be integrated for real change. The HR department can also be of great assistance here by increasing the talent pool, recruiting, hiring, employee engagement, employee retention, relationship management trainings, identify pain points, create action plans to meet goals, and use data to tackle existing issues. Social-emotional intelligence should be a part of a student's curriculum. We can all be a voice for the most vulnerable underserved students, ELLs, special education students, and foster youth, and maintain safe environments for the learning of all of our children by taking action. Effective DEI strategies involves the whole team. The question promotes prompts as an organization system. What is NVUSD's level of maturity in this respect? At least, how is it being perceived by students, parents, and the community? Taking accountability is not an easy thing. It prompts moving forward and learning from past mistakes, so ideally, this doesn't happen again. According to the growing pain-violence-related NVUSD suspension track with environment in middle schools article, suspension rates have increased at middle schools. There are four seats being challenged in this November election areas, 2, 4, 5, and 7. Anything can happen from here to then, but right now, you still have the power to make things right. With this said, I hope things change at Brown's Valley for the greater good of all students too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ortiz. Do we have anyone online who wants to comment?
There is no public comment.
Oh, Trustee Chu, were there any public comments?
On the mic.
Trustee Chu, were there any public comments?
There were no public comments on non-agenda items that were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Okay, great. Thank you. And there's no one online?
No, you're good.
Okay. So we can move on to reports. Board of Education and Student Board Representative?
Good evening, Board and Community. My name is Miroslava De Ressa Cifuentes, and I am your Student Board Alternate from Vintage High School. On Wednesday, Vintage unfortunately experienced... On Wednesday, Vintage unfortunately experienced a gas leak caused by some construction on Trower. Thankfully, admin was able to, like, quickly address the issue and find the solution, but this experience highlighted the importance of safety procedures, as students near the front of the school, including myself, were able to safely evacuate to the gym. Additionally, today, the site council meeting was, during the site council meeting, we were able to review and approve the school safety plan, which will, I believe, will later come to the Board for further approval. Onto more exciting news. This year at Vintage, leadership is hosting a new event called, during Halloween, called Trunk or Treat, where seniors will be able to decorate their cars and pass out candy to underclassmen during our intervention period. Furthermore, the Avid 11th and 12th classes were able to tour UC Santa Cruz and UC Monterey Bay this past Thursday, as well as visit the Santa Cruz Boardwalk. Last Thursday, during last Thursday, it was really interesting to see two different types of college campuses and learn about the different resources available. The majority of 11th graders at Vintage also took the PSAT free of cost between yesterday and the day before. Thank you.
Trustee Hart.
All right. It's always tough when Elba's not here because I have to follow up the student representative, and they're always so good, their reports. Okay, so for, for my area, during this last couple of weeks, on the 12th, I did attend my 30th year High School Union, which was a combination for Napa High and Vintage, which was interesting, and lots of, lots of people came out, so, you know, definitely a flashback to my own years in high school. On the 14th, I was invited to attend an Artful Learning ELA session at Unidos Middle School, which I thought was actually really very interesting, and I got to learn a little bit about that program that they implement there, and see some of the excitement that they have for that, so that was very cool. On the 15th, I sat in on the NCOE Board Meeting. On the 16th, I got to go visit Brown's Valley, not elementary, Brown's Valley TK through 8 school, which was always good to see, and get to check out some of the classrooms there. On Saturday, the 19th, I was able to join Alta Heights for their 75th anniversary celebration, which was very cool. There was some past principals and teachers and all kinds of families that came out there, so that was very nice to see, and a very good community event, and they had the classrooms open that had just recently been refurbished, so people got a chance to take a look at that, which I thought was awesome as well. And then yesterday, on the 23rd, I got to visit NVLA for the first time, which was, was very exciting, the other DLI Elementary School here in Napa, and visit with the principal there, and get to check out some of the classrooms, so that was pretty cool. Busy couple of weeks. That concludes my report.
I was sorry to miss the Alta Heights thing. I continue my weekly facilities assessment meetings. I had a wonderful visit with Principal Cisneros at Vallejo High School. I was welcomed personally by a student in each classroom I visited. I really was moved by the personal statements and the accompanying notes of support by parents, friends, and guardians of the students that peppered the walls of the cafeteria, multipurpose room area. It's hard to be on that campus and not feel the vibe of positivity. I attended the NCOE Board Meeting via Zoom. I had the pleasure once again of meeting with Ann Ching, a long-term trustee in Sonoma, and has continued interest in governance and an interest in how districts have and are currently dealing with declining enrollment. I attended the coffee with superintendent at Vichy Elementary, which was very well-attended. The parent group was highly engaged and asked thoughtful questions about facilities, state funding limitations, and middle school matriculation. Diana Grigsby, an NVUSD parent, asked about the potential of NVTA allowing students free access to public transportation with a student ID, and Liz Alessio kindly agreed to speak with her. And I had my strategic plan governance discussion with our Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, Julie Bordeus, which was fantastic. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Gracia.
Yes. On the 11th, I attended the VHS versus Rancho Cotati game. On the 12th, I attended the gathering put on by the district's law firm, and then on the 18th, I attended the court hearing in Napa. And the 22nd, I also attended coffee with the sooth at Vichy Elementary. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Chu.
Good evening. On October 11th, I attended the NVUSD Professional Learning Day. It was always, it's always great to go to those events when I get to see all of our teachers together and got to reconnect with many of them who I hadn't seen for a very long time. On October 18th, I attended the Farm to School Month Celebration at Donaldson Way Elementary, along with trustees Riser and Water, where we met Cecilia Aguarre Curry, who presented, I think that's a proclamation, right, to the Center for Eco-Literacy for their California Food for California Kids Network. It's always really great when you can see the work of the teachers and the students that really show that they know the stuff. So, thank you to Ms. Caldwell, who is the head school garden teacher there, for doing such wonderful work, and for the PTA who has, you know, monetarily sponsored a lot of the items that they've, they've had to use to kind of refresh that space. And I was so encouraged by that, that I went back a second day to their open house for the school garden, where a group of their students convinced me I had to buy persimmons. So, I have lots of persimmons now. But it's, it's just a great wave. I think Donaldson Way is doing such a great job with their school garden to bring that community together, because it isn't just for the students during the day, but they also have it, the teacher comes and volunteers their time to have it available for community members as well after school and on weekends. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Riser.
Thank you. On the 11th, I also attended the morning session of our Professional Learning Day at American Canyon High School. It was really great to have the opportunity to sort of have Dr. Mousetti unveil and describe the, our strategic vision to the entire gathered staff. I think it's so important to just set forth that vision that we're all holding and that we worked so hard to generate, so I thought that was really worthwhile. And then, of course, the keynote speaker, Mark Ciperna, gave a really passionate presentation about his perspective on the Gen Z and how they approach decision-making and motivation around their, where they put their energy and time, and how we can best support them in, in setting up vision for their future path. So, that was, I thought, also really valuable. And on October 18th, I also attended that Donaldson Way Farm to School Event. It is just magical back there. They're very lucky to have quite a large space on that campus for a garden, and it was really neat to see the kind of array of kinds of learning that can go on in the garden. It wasn't open for business at the time, but there is a mud kitchen that I was really wanting to go check out and make, make some mud pies. So, to see that for the TK all the way up to 5th grade, there can be creative play, free play, science play, gardening, you know, just getting your hands in the dirt and, and getting away from the technology and the academic focus, not to say that there isn't also academic learning that can take place outside in that environment. And then, the kicker of the day, I thought, was that Kristen Teckell, our Food Services Director, and her staff were there, and there were pizza ovens, and they were making pizza with tomato sauce made from the tomatoes harvested in that garden. So, what a cool, sort of full-circle thing for the kids who work in that garden to then get to, to enjoy that, and so special thanks to Kristen for making that happen. That was really special. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Well, I attended a lot of the same events you did. I think I'll just, I'm sorry, I did miss the last meeting. I took my, I'm now a grandmother, so you can call me, yes, call me Grandma. We can drop President. And, and so I decided to, you know, pull rank and not come to the meeting, although I did watch the video. And, you know, before that, we had, maybe some of you mentioned it, you know, the CSBA President came to, came to Napa, and we took him on a whirlwind tour of five schools, and I enjoyed that. What an energetic person he is, and we're so lucky, we're so lucky to have someone like that. And, and he was, you know, really, just so interested in Napa Valley Unified. It was, it was really just a delightful day. And I, too, attended the NCOE meeting, watched it online, let's see, went to the 75th anniversary of, of Alta Heights, and that was fun. I went to the Napa Valley College Breakfast, and, and Dr. Ready gave a very inspiring presentation about our, our program of dual enrollment, and just everyone was really excited about it, so I was very proud of that. And Donaldson Way Garden, yes, and trustee Gracia, I know you're always concerned about the quality of pizza. I actually had a sample of that pizza sauce, and it was really good. Those tomatoes are as sweet as sugar, and they had just a little bit of red pepper in it. It was really very good. And last night, I went to the Vintage High School Fall Choir and saw some real superstars perform, and it was a lot of fun, and people were, they're always glad when one of the trustees shows up, so that was great. And that's the end of my report. So, now, Board Representative Reports, we do not have a special ed.
No, we didn't have that.
Okay. We don't have a City of American Canyon?
Nope, did not have that either.
Okay. We don't have a City of Napa liaison, all right? And we do not have a Town of Yountville?
Correct.
Okay, fine. So now, we will go to the Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Thank you, President Water, and good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. It is hard to believe that we're approaching the end of October, and that 10 weeks of learning in the 24-25 school year are behind us. I know our students and teachers are hard at work diving deep into grade-level standards and course-content curriculum. I witnessed this firsthand during my visit to Vintage High School with Principal Jessica Hutchinson last Monday. I'd really like to highlight what I observed there. We visited English classes, English classes, aren't you happy about that, President Water? I mean Grandma. And I saw the VHS English Department hard at work teaching critical reading and writing skills across their courses during the first and second periods. I also had the pleasure of visiting Melanie Merkner's psychology class, where I observed Ms. Merkner training her students to be academic mentors and peer-support providers. When I observe teachers building student skills in the areas of leadership, empathy, communication, and human dynamics, I feel excited and confident that our students are being prepared for a healthier, happier, and meaningful life. There are so many implications and applications for what I observed that day in the VHS Peer-Support Program and Psychology Class. As we all know, our students' abilities to navigate relationships and be effective listeners are so critical to moving through our world, so I'm grateful that we have educators and programs at the high school focusing on this important socio-emotional development work alongside the rigor of the English courses. Aren't they famous for rigor?
Yes. At least when I talk. And when Dr. Ready talks.
I also want to thank the Unidos Middle School Math Department and Principal Alejandra Uribe, just like trustee Hart, she observed, I think you said, the English Department doing the Artful Learning. I had the pleasure of joining the four Unidos math teachers during the Art, their Artful Learning Professional Development and Planning Session with Artful Learning Executive Director Patrick Bolek and retired NVUSD Principal Pam Perkins, who now consults with them. It was fantastic observing the math teachers think about teaching rigorous math standards by integrating art into their curriculum. As you all would imagine, the units the teachers were designing will allow for students to experience the strong integration that is both natural and possible between math and art concepts, which is really exciting. The depth of knowledge that was emerging within these integrated units was really impressive. Thank you to all the parents who attended the first Coffee with the Superintendent event of the 24-25 school year at Vichy Elementary, although mostly Vichy parents were in attendance, and great attendance by Vichy parents, actually. It was also great to host parents from Napa High, Alta Heights, and Willow. We had meaningful conversations about the topics that were type of, top of mind for the parent group. I appreciate these informal meetings where I get to hear directly from parents so that we can ensure we are being responsive and continuously improving the educational experience of our students by listening to their families. I have a quick update on our Strategic Plan Transforming Our Future 2024-2029. I wanted to share that the Assistant Superintendents, Executive Director Peter Booth and Julie Bordeus and myself, who all serve as the Strategic Plan Steering Committee, spent several hours this week holding what we are calling milestone meetings with each of our strategy leads, the 15 strategies that are nested within the strategic plan. The milestone check-in meetings are a great way to ensure the progress, that progress aligns with our goals and timelines. They're useful in the project management and implementation of the plan, ensure accountability. They provide, they also provide an opportunity to celebrate progress, they create strong cross-division team collaboration, and ensure that we advance our long-term vision by focusing on the immediate action steps year by year and quarter by quarter. So, we'll have a couple more of those with each of the strategy leads in this current academic year. Lastly, given that it's the last board meeting in October, I want to wish everyone a joyful and safe Halloween celebration next week. Please be sure to be safe, but also be sure to have lots of fun. I also want to recognize that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month before it's over. It's a time to honor the strength and resilience of all of those that are affected by breast cancer. To the warriors, survivors, and those we've lost, your courage is deeply admired and respected. Together, we can make a difference through awareness, action, and compassion. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Assistant Superintendents, who will report on the work taking place in their respective divisions, and we'll start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Deidre Sessifuentes, and Dr. Mousetti. I'm happy to report we had another successful tuberculosis screening event organized by HR Technician Cheryl Anderson last Wednesday in front of the Education Center. At this drive-through clinic, 237 employees were able to quickly and conveniently complete their required TB screening without having to go see their own physician, saving them time and hassle. We will hold another event on November 5th from 11:00 to 5:00 for anyone else who needs it. A big shout-out to Cheryl, who oversees this event with support from Amanda Rosas in HR and maintenance and operations with setup help. Walktober, our Fall Fitness Challenge is going strong. Walktober is a voluntary and fun way to get motivated to get moving. Currently, NVUSD has by far the most participants of all the districts in our region, with 374. To illustrate, Fairfield-Susun, which is a district of over 21,000 students, is in a distant second place with 293 participants. In addition to the competition aspect, which you can tell I enjoy the competition aspect, the mere act of logging your activity tends to get you more mindful about moving. Finally, don't forget to submit your nominations for Employee of the Year. Staff, students, parents, and community members can all make nominations, and we are looking for honorees in every category, including certificated, classified, and management employees. The Google form is available on our website and in the latest family newsletter. The deadline for nomination is November 1st. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we have Dr. Monica Ready, the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Support Services.
Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Alternate Deresas Sefuentes, Superintendent Dr. Mousetti, and the NVUSD community. Literacy remains at the forefront of the instructional agenda, as you hear throughout the reports this evening. The Instructional Support Services team is deepening and strengthening our focus on early literacy. Today, I had the opportunity to join eight elementary site principals and launch our Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling or Letters Learning Journey together. After completing the Module 1 coursework independently, the second cohort of leaders came together to discuss and deepen our understanding of the four key objectives of the Letters for Administrators Training. How the Science of Reading Creates a System of Literacy, the Role of Administrators in Literacy Achievement, the Essential Components of Implementation, and How to Prepare Educators to Teach and Lead Literacy Instruction. I want to thank the eight principals for taking time away from their sites to engage in this deep learning. As we onboard our third cohort, we're excited to engage our first cohort of Letters-trained site leaders and teachers in looking at how we systematize early literacy instruction across school sites. Using the Universal Literacy Instruction rubric from the Letters Administrators Course to guide this work, a team of site leaders and teachers will collaborate around how they are incorporating Letters Best Practices into their instruction. District Academic Specialists- District Academic Specialists and Administrators will also be visiting classrooms several times this year to see Letters Best Practices in Action, provide ongoing coaching support, and help align high-quality literacy instruction across NVUSD. A team of teachers and administrators trained in Cohort 1 will come together on November 5th for the first of three planning sessions focused on defining research-based instructional strategies that support language and literacy development and align those strategies to the district MTSS framework accordingly. I want to thank Carly Miller, Tracy Weiss, and Executive Director Matt Manning for their relentless commitment to early literacy. The Secondary English Language Arts Team is making progress towards a culture of student data use as we monitor student progress with reading and writing in middle and high school. During the first week in October, select ELA classrooms in our transitional grades of 6, 8, and 9 administered common assessments aligned to our priority standards. The assessments were developed using our new core curricular resource platform, StudySync, and mirrored the question types and rigor of grade-level statewide assessments. Teacher feedback on the process revealed an interest in analyzing and practicing these types of assessment questions with students to guide their learning and discussion in the classroom. Based on the positive feedback from teachers, we look forward to scaling up this practice throughout the year. Thank you to Kelly Miller and our secondary ELA teachers for the focused implementation and progress monitoring of grade-level learning through the use of StudySync. The Instructional Support Services Team continues to prioritize listening and learning with the NVUSD community through principal learning, site visits, and classroom observations. Since our last board meeting, I had the opportunity to observe and engage with site leaders and teachers from Snow Elementary School and Phillips Magnet Elementary, who participate in a collaborative called P3CC. Teacher teams from Snow and Phillips came together to plan their next math unit. As I observed their planning session, it was evident that rigorous academic knowledge at grade level is a foundation for planning high-impact math instruction. I appreciated their focus on aligning the tasks and assessments to grade-level content so that students experience learning opportunities and methods for progress monitoring at grade level. This was followed by a visit to Unidos Middle School, where I observed Spanish Language Arts teachers planning their trimester 2 unit with a focus on priority standards aligned to an overarching concept and theme that assesses student progress through art. Following the planning time, I had the opportunity to see artful learning in action as I walked ELA classrooms with Principal Uribe. The focus on rigorous academic content as a foundation continued to be front and center at principal learning last Thursday, as site leaders discussed the connection between college and career readiness through the lens of an instructional framework and focus on guaranteed and viable curriculum. I will close this evening by thanking our site principals and teacher leaders for continuing to engage with the Instructional Support Services Team. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with Principal Flint and interventionist Sally Weiss at Northwood Elementary School to learn about their successes, goals for the year, and need for the 2024 school year. Thank you to Principal Hutchinson and the Vintage High School community for hosting our History/Social Science Professional Learning Communities training and opening your classroom doors to school site administrators, so we can observe and learn about the tasks students are engaged in, as well as build our capacity to support effective teaching and rigorous academic learning at grade level. We look forward to continuing to listen and learn with Visi, Canyon Oaks, Napa Junction, and Shear in the coming weeks. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Reddy, for your thorough report. And last, we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala, who oversees Business and Operations.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the Board and the community. My update will focus on facilities-related work. We've been working diligently to address our tripping hazards at our schools. The blacktop at Phillips has been replaced, and a number of tripping hazards at other locations on the site have been fixed. Bids are due for the Redwood parking lot at the end of the month, as are bids for the Pueblo Vista blacktop. We received a bid to address tripping hazards at NVLA, and work on that will start shortly. We are also in the process of paving a small area near the TK play structure at Canyon Oaks. Roofing repairs at Redwood at Silverado have taken place. This will address some of the worst roof leaks in preparation for the winter. More significant roofing replacement projects are planned for the future. Measure A2 planning for American Canyon Schools continues with the selection for a lease/leaseback contractor for HVAC roofing, fire alarm improvements at ACMS, and Canyon Oaks. The new NPR at Donaldson Way will be starting very soon with the relocation of a few portables and preparation for the construction site. The design replacement for turf and track surface at ACMS has been approved by DSA. This work will take place in the summer of 2025 as well. Staff is also in the process of working with Van Pelt to evaluate all the play structures and surfacing at each elementary school. Once staff finishes their evaluation, an architect will be hired to design this work. The due date for our solar RFP is also at the end of this month. Once they are received, staff will evaluate these proposals and make recommendations to the Board, should they be viable, as soon as December or the January meeting. As a reminder, the RFP requires providers to submit proposals that utilize a power purchasing agreement that does not require any funding from NVUSD. A power purchasing agreement would allow NVUSD to purchase solar energy at a lower rate than PG&E. Planning for the summer of 2025 in Napa is in full swing. This evening, we are seeking board approval for design for eight campuses that need roofing, HVAC, and paint upgrades. This design work is a first step towards making our campuses safe and modern. This concludes my report.
Thank you, President Water. That concludes the executive staff reports this evening.
Okay, great. And now, move on to Facilities and Bond Program update.
There is no update. That was the update.
Okay, great. Thank you. And now, we will move on to the approval of the Consent Calendar, Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the Board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll-call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a Board member.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from trustee Gracia and a second from trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Let's see, we will need a roll-call vote.
Yes. Student Board Member DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jenkowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And J is Presentations and Discussion Items. We have none. K, Action Items. One is Facility Improvement. A is FID 1.23-24, Inspector of Records for Donaldson Way Campus Upgrades Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in, oh, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. B, FID 18.1-25, Architectural Services for Campus Modernization Projects at Six Sites?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. C, FID 18.6-24, Agreement with Stormwater Specialists Incorporated for Donaldson Way Campus Upgrade Project?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from trustee Gracia, a second from trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. D, FID 18.7-24, Agreement with Miller Pacific for Geotechnical Services?
Move to approve. But wait, my D says something different.
That's what mine says. Mine.
Okay. On my printed agenda.
Well, it's okay. Okay, so, do we have a motion? Move to approve. Trustee Hart, a second?
Second.
Okay, we have two seconds. Jenk, Woods, and Hart, okay. And do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nothing? Okay. E, FID 10.1-25, Measure A2 Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Removal of Member?
Yeah, move to approve, but the printed agenda does not match. Okay, I found it. Never mind. I got confused.
Second.
Who was the first? I missed that. Okay, trustee Gracia was the motion, and trustee Hart was the second. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstained? It's unanimous. Two, Instructional Services. A, Core and Supplementary Instructional Materials Adoptions for High School?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. B, Agreement with Nature Bridge?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous. C, Agreement with Marzano Resources?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. D, Agreement with Napa County Office of Education CalHope Grant?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, abstained? It's unanimous. E, Student Data Privacy Sharing, Student Privacy Agreement with PACBAC?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Are there any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. F, K-12 Data Sharing and Services Partnership Agreement with California College Guidance Initiative?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Hart. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee DeRosa Cifuentes?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? It's unanimous. Yay. L, Informational. Let's see, General Services. Did the Curriculum and Student Support Committee meeting, is there a report on there? Nope. Facilities and Technology? Nope. Finance? Nope. Policy? Nope. So, M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent? Well, okay, I do have a comment, and it just occurred to me. I didn't alert any of you before. But when you get to be my age, you pick up the obituary section in the newspaper, and the joke goes, you're just thrilled when you're not in it. But last week, I picked one up, and it was very sad. Ian Premick, a student who graduated with my son at Napa High School, died at Queen of the Valley of an illness. And he was a delightful person. He was never my student, but he always greeted me. You know, I'll never forget my early years at Napa High, and he was a very friendly face. "Good morning, Mrs. Water." And he was a wonderful student, and a wonderful singer, and a terrific actor. Had many talents, went to NYU. His parents live in town here, and I'd like us to have a moment of silence for him, please. Agenda items?
Yes, future agenda item. We passed earlier today, Item I5C. Part of the item there indicated that we were temporarily approving that item for[1760.91]